Yeah.
Anthony, if you're missing-
You may be okay when you're ready.
That's okay. Actually, I was wondering where the second one went, but.
I promised her to.
You are. Sorry, I don't know if you heard that. Ready when you are.
Welcome to the April tenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Board of the Town of Southampton. We'll have a roll call.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity is absent. Secretary is here. Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham is absent. Board Member Glazer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Please join us for the pledge.
And to the Republic of which stands one nation under a invisible liberty.
Gloria, do we have minutes?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. We have March thirteenth and March twenty-seventh.
March thirteenth and twenty-seventh. Do I have a motion to accept them? By George, second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Five in favor, two absent. So we are up to date. Great. That's terrific. So we're going to go right into Alexander Vreeland. Teresa?
Hi, good afternoon. This is a final subdivision application for a two-lot subdivision that takes currently, they have a flag lot on Daylily Lane. They are abandoning the flag and they are going to take access off of Mill Path.
Is there an applicant?
Uh, no, he did not come today, but he is aware.
He's aware of the report?
Yes. Um, so we had done two pre-apps in twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one was the last pre-app application. And prior to that, it was like twenty seventeen. It was part of a larger subdivision of, um, what was the subdivision? I forget, uh.
That's the Daylily Lane Road that goes up from Scottle?
Correct. Um, and we had done CICRA on it, um, because it was in the Ag Overlay Districts Type One action. We had determined that it was a negative impact, so we issued a medge. Um, and we were about to approve it when, uh, there was a holdup with respect to getting final subdivision approval from the Health Department, mainly because they need to file covenants, um, agreeing to install public water on Mill Path when it is available in, uh, Atlopers. Um, so that was the holdup at the Health Department. And so we had deemed it incomplete until we got those final approvals. They submitted revised maps that show everything we needed to do. And now we're just going to conditionally approve it, um, in accordance with the resolution. The be it resolved, the final subdivision map entitled Map of Alexander Vreeland, prepared by David Elsaskas, dated October twenty-fifth, twenty-ten, last revised January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, is hereby approved to the following conditions. Payment of the park fee, currently twenty-five hundred dollars, for the new residential lot being created. Sub, uh, submission of declarates, declarations and covenants for, um, A, no further subdivision of any lots. B, no lot line modifications without planning board approval. C, no installation of utility poles or overhead utilities for the lots. D, all utilities installed underground, inclusive of cable, telephone, and electric. E, three-inch drainage for all future impervious surfaces, including driveways, roofs, and impervious surfaces. F, retention of stormwater runoff and sediment controls during construction and after construction, so that there's no runoff into the proposed road or the existing street. And the establishment of covenanted naturally vegetated buffers specifically along the Westerly Lot Line of the newly created lot. Uh, also, we are recommending, uh, requiring compliance with the driveway safety standards located in the town code in accordance with Fire Marshal recommendations. Submission of mortgage consent if applicable, title certification, submission of certification of abandonment of the underlying subdivision. Oh, that needs to be corrected. That's a-
There is a-
Yeah, let me fix that. That's actually, um, the subdivision of Charles Van Deveer Junior West Parcel. So that will be corrected. Approval of the, uh, legal documents by the town attorney and filing of the maps within sixty-two days of signature.
Any questions?
No.
Did we talk about, uh, project limiting fences to protect whatever, uh, landscape, trees or landscaping that's there?
Well, it's a former farm field and the area is being-
It's the one to the north?
Yeah. It's the one highlighted in red. And you can see there's not a lot of existing vegetation. That area has grown up over time. Uh, we are protecting those trees along that Westerly property line. Um, and those are going to be part of an easement, so they won't be cleared.
Okay. Good. Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Acknowledge. Vice Chair Finity is arrived.
Thank you.
Already texted.
Okay. Um, so we'll take a motion on this. Motion to approve.
Motion.
By Gloria and second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Uh, so there are five in favor, one absent, one abstention. Okay. So then we're moving into Krena. One thousand four Montauk Highway.
You got my text, right? You got my text?
I had it assigned. You said I'll be late, right? I'm fifteen minutes behind. Yes, I got it, Dennis.
This is the site plan application, um, simple for actually that line. We started reviewing the draft staff report at the last meeting.
Oh.
Um, I've revised the report since then, and I've highlighted it so you can go through that today. And I also have, um, a decision in the packet as well.
And we have your name for the record, please?
It's, uh, Alec Kosiski from Bohler Engineering.
Bohl-
Bohler. B-O-H-L-E-R.
There were a couple items we still hadn't pulled out. Um, the alignment of the driveway with the Ashland Capara site next door. Or what became the discussion about a second curb cut with an ingress and an ingress. And then, um, the applicant was going to see if they could find some information about the street sign or at least prior to the sign plans. And then I, um-
I cross-access.
Yeah, and I addressed the, the cross-access here and I addressed the parking waiver for that cross-access. Um, so the-
So do you want to read the report or do you want to go over those issues?
Um, yeah, maybe we just go over the, uh, issues that are revised and, uh, addressed since then. I did speak to Tom Houghton about the second cut, and it was his opinion that if they were willing to make a cut here, this one seemed similar, if not less invasive due to, you know, he was considering the slopes. Um, so I don't know if the applicants considered that more, but I did look, I did write up the report as if we were going to have two curb cuts, one in and one out.
On, on Montauk Highway?
No, no, on Willow Road.
On Willow.
So having an in-
I was not here last week.
So we talked about having an, uh, an ingress for the, for the driveway that's closer to Montauk Highway to alleviate the congestion there and then have an out toward the back.
Because it stacks up there in the summer. And then that's where the hill starts too.
So that, so now that plan will not be revised because you're still sharing a two-way, two-way entrance.
Yeah, this will be, uh, push in and out unless there's something-
Yeah, so we, we had reached out to the, and the applicant that will eventually be-
Do I?
Part of the application and what we came to an agreement with the applicant is that. We took the site plan south of us. Uh, we've overlaid it to our site plan. And our applicant approved us just moving the entire accessway, uh, to align, sorry.
Roughly, but that's, that's pretty good.
Roughly. Um, this aligns with the back aisle to our property. Um, it also now fully aligns with the natural cross-access at the rear.
In and out here.
So you have in and out on both?
No, no. It'll just be a one twenty-four foot out.
A one in and one out.
Yeah, so we're going to take the entire cut and slide it away to the back. I think that, that works.
Jackie, this is going to be only one cut. This curb cut is not going to be-
Yeah, the other one's going to be limited.
Oh, this is gone.
Yeah. What's in red is where we're going to relocate, so.
And that's farther away from the corner.
Farther away.
Yeah.
And closer alignment to the application, south of us, so they want to slightly modify their cut. We can have them aligned.
Great.
And it doesn't change the parking or the aisles at all?
Nope. It doesn't impact the site layout at all outside of, as I mentioned, um, it does create better throughway for that cross-access north of us.
Mm-hmm.
In the event that time comes and we connect, so.
And also kind of lines up with the way the cross-access is on the north side and the other side of the property.
And gets it farther away from vehicles coming in off Montauk Highway.
Yeah, that's the most important. Okay.
So our applicant will agree to that, um, a little bit to get them to that point, but.
Good.
What was cross-access?
The- And then there was a discussion about looking at the street sign location. I don't know if, uh, we spoke to the town or the DOT yet, but we could-
We reached out to the DOT. They just haven't responded to us yet about the street sign.
Okay, you know the issue there, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, but our applicant was willing to work and address it. It just, we just got to get to the logistics on how to address the street sign, so.
You know, we don't want to lose that tree.
Yeah.
But I did drive by again on the way here and cannot see the street sign.
Yep.
So something has to be moved.
You constructing a sidewalk or?
Uh, it's a new sidewalk.
It's a new one.
Yeah, so initially we didn't, so we, we did get a DOT approval initially without the sidewalk at the front. Uh, the board had recommended that we put the sidewalk in. Um, it does create grading challenges if you go to the property. So you're going to lose some of the trees. We're going to do our best to keep the trees. Um, but because of the grading challenges and adding a ADA compliant sidewalk up front, it does pose some of those challenges, so.
Well, we have to know that ahead of time, if there are going to be any loss of trees, because those are some old trees.
Yeah, so that there, they are reflected in the landscape plan. Um, it just, we haven't received the DOT comments back yet on the sidewalk. Um, as I mentioned, we did have their approval, um, but we had to go back and amend the approval to add the sidewalk. So we're waiting for that approval.
Um, I addressed the waiver of the, um, the parking spaces for the cross-access. We did look at it a little bit closer internally with Claire, and there was a loss of three spaces which the board was willing to waive. But there's a space, uh, adjacent to the dumpster or the trash enclosure that would allow for two parking spaces in that future cross-access aisle. And then the board would, uh, waive one parking space as opposed to three.
Okay.
Landscape and screening, page four. I just, uh, there's revision there. I just cleaned up the language about the three quantities on the right of way of Montauk Highway. Do we have a landscape in plan?
Yes.
Do you want to look at it again? You have it, you promise. Or it could be a hair issue. Yep. These are the, the streets for you that we were talking about that are in the right-of-way.
That we're going to try to, we're maintaining at this time.
That's what, with a sidewalk.
Yes.
People do go around with the sidewalks here. It's common.
Yeah, we just got to get DOT to bless the sidewalk. You, you will see in the site plan, we kind of do work around the trees, so.
And then I put in a note to, with the applicant's reviewer inventory, any additional, uh, any additional existing trees that they can save. Uh, that was brought up at the last meeting as well.
And so there's four trees here on Willow?
Yeah, there's four, um-
This one on the corner?
One on the corner and three down here. Uh, this will flip, of course, but we've asked for more screening along the, uh, parking adjacent to Willow and, uh, more of a green screening along the driveway. There's a couple of, uh, there's more trees scattered along the back, a lot of arborite, ivory giants, and a lot of, um, ornamental planting.
So the cross-access is coming in where?
Uh, here. These last three spaces adjacent to where the, uh, little buildout is by the trash enclosure.
There, I marked it up in that. It's the red, the two red lines that I just sparked, northwest, northwest corner.
Okay, good.
You're talking about trees on the perimeter. Are there any trees within the parking area itself?
Within the parking, it's all low, uh, low shrubs and grasses. There are two islands there.
Okay.
Uh, but there are around the parking, around the other sides of the parking and the other corner of the building.
The reason, the reason we ask and Gloria asks, I'm sure this is on her mind, is that trees in parking lots provide shade for cars. If it makes for a better-looking parking lot, it's not all asphalt. Where it can be done. So I don't know how many rows we have over there on that side, but we do have our code calls for, what is it, Claire, twenty feet? Every twenty feet?
For every fifty spaces, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, twenty, about, for every, uh, twenty-five square feet, I'd recommend two, like, over fifty.
Over fifty, yeah. And we're under a fifty. But they do have landscaping and-
Yeah, we have landscaping throughout the entire perimeter.
No trees.
Yeah, just, and we'll revisit that when we move the crop curb cut here and we'll revisit the landscape and see how it-
Good.
Aligns, because right now that's going to change. It's going to shift.
Good.
So.
How long will it take for the DOT to respond about the sign, do you think, Tom?
It's always a good question. I don't know. I don't know if that's, if you're in active discussions with them, I'm sure that's one you can remind them about.
Right.
I would think that they would be able to give you some kind of a direction on that soon or, you know, as part of their conversations. I don't know how much extensive analysis it requires on their part.
Yes, I mean, we just had recently brought it up to them, so we're just waiting for their feedback. But our applicant is willing to do whatever it takes to accommodate the board's concerns, so it's a question of who can tell us what to do.
Right.
Okay. So are we building out this, um, cross-access now? Because we have cross-access all the way down.
Yes, I've requested that you change on the plan. Um, in the meantime, we can only do a future cross-access agreement because the restaurant next door has yet to come in for a final application.
Where are they? Where are they in the process?
Well, they finished pre-submission a few months back. I forget exactly when. So the-
Probably the Health Department.
We don't need Health Department approval to, to-
But we haven't mapped out. You've mapped it out.
It's mapped out and we'll have the language.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we are fine. Building it out now, um, as part of this application, so.
Wonderful.
We have no objections to that.
Everybody should be as cooperative as you want. That'd be great. Like our job.
You'll do it all the way up to the property line. You'll kind of extend that.
Yeah, we'll just, it'll be just a closed area with shrub. I guess we'll leave it open. Because we'll have to figure out how we can keep it closed until the application north of us comes to connect to us. Because right now it would just be this road leading to-
You could put a chain up or something.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll close it off.
Okay, so you can read your report now.
Yeah, I, um, so that, page three, I addressed the, the parking, but that's in the decision, the, uh, the waiver. Landscaping and screening at the bottom of page four. I cleaned up the language. Uh, these are the paragraphs that are highlighted that I, that I changed. Again, maintaining the tree in the right-of-way on Montauk Highway, the trees. And then the applicant to review inventory, the property for any further existing trees that can be saved. Uh, at the top of page five, I added the note regarding, um, construction staging, and that'll be reviewed and approved by the town engineer. Uh, and then I specifically spelled out the, uh, additional screening that was around the parking lot on the street and the driveway. Lighting on page six, I added the dark sky requirement language you requested along with, um, addressing the interior lighting and the light levels. Uh, interior lighting limited to hours of operation beyond that, reduce the light levels. And throw something on their plans to, to, that makes that-
And the lighting in the parking area, ten-foot poles?
And, yeah, there are a couple that are fourteen, but I have it in here to change back to ten.
Yep.
On page seven, the public address, I just further clarified that and added the, the, uh, bow horns and outdoor amplification are not permitted. And then lastly, N, or page eight, the, in energy conservation, uh, just locating the EV charging stations to the back or adjacent to the trash enclosure.
But that's where the cross-access is going.
No, well, it'd be below the trash enclosure, not, not adjacent to the, um, to be down here. Or, or they can be kept here. That sort of became part of the-
But they need that for parking, don't they?
George, can you read?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, it became part of the conversation when we were talking about-
I guess we're just showing you the current plans.
We're going to keep the cross-access to the back.
So they can stay.
So they could either keep it here or maybe, I know that those-
Yeah, we're flexible. I mean, the applicant doesn't mind moving them. They're just, we reached out to the EV consultant. The, a lot of the primary was going to come off Montauk Highway. It was going to be the easiest way to do the run.
So they're likely, they might stay here if that's-
Right, now it's being shown right closer to the building, right?
Yeah.
Which kind of makes sense.
It's closer to the transformers and the city building, so I don't know. Do you have a preference either way or?
They're trying to find that. I think that's, that's the EV station.
They're only moving it to accommodate the, the access, right?
We talked about that, and then it became a vote of taking up sort of prime spaces. So I guess if they can't be moved, I think that's no question. Is, is the board opposed to keeping them where they are? So that's-
Sure, it's fine.
Even, we needed to slide them back a few stalls.
EV charging.
Nearness to the electrical.
Yes, we need to be able to connect it.
Yeah. That's, that was all the changes I had in the report. The decision is a-
I could just, yeah, we've got our, our usual, uh, sustainability paragraph. But with the exception of charging stations, I'm not seeing anything, um, in this building that's, suggests sustainability. Are there any plans for the applicant to look at providing some sustainability elements like solar on the roof or geothermal or any, um, building that would actually make the building itself be more efficient?
Uh, not that I'm aware of right now. I know we looked at solar. Uh, I think the way the architectural's laid out, it didn't quite work. Um, but I could bring it back to the applicant.
I mean, we, we can't force you to do it, but we really would encourage you, especially since it's a, it's a medical building.
Right.
You want the building to be healthy too.
Correct.
The issue is interior lighting, or like glass.
Yeah, he, she, she addressed that.
Yeah.
To reduce it after, um, reduce the interior lighting after business hours.
Do we specify just a generic reduction?
Uh, just a generic reduction, not, I made it, I wrote it so it's, um-
We should try to get some kind of a formula, like reduce it by fifty percent or-
Well, they have to be, have zero lumens at, at the lot line.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We limited hours of operation and reduce beyond that, not to project into public view right of way or trespass beyond the property lines.
Yeah.
I was at a meeting with the Watermill CAC recently, and, and the subject of lighting along the corridor there, particularly right now with the car dealerships, uh, was raised, um, because of the large glass showroom fronts. And so, again, I think that just reinforces that.
Yes.
Have to look very carefully. I, I, I don't know, I presume that the people they were concerned about comply with the code. But having driven past there at night recently, I can see where they're concerned by the amount of light that's, you know, coming out of those showrooms.
It's broadcasting light everywhere.
So just, again, just to reinforce, I think, everything you can do to keep it.
We'll take a look at the photometrics. The building is positioned in a way that the corner is at twenty-five feet. And where the glass is, it kind of is further back, averages between fifty and a hundred feet from the road, so.
Can you pull that up?
Um, we'll, we'll make sure that, that's calculated into it.
Thank you.
So it's facing south.
It's Montauk Highway.
This is the side facing the parking lot, uh, facing Montauk Highway.
Yeah.
Facing Montauk, right.
So, do you see an opportunity for solar there?
Not really.
I know we looked into it. I just, I remember it being a little bit difficult.
This is the only area that's-
That's the only area, which is, is the center portion, yeah.
That's not very much. I mean, the right way to do it is design the building so that it allows solar, not build, not design a building that you like that now can't use solar. I mean, that's not how sustainable buildings should be built, but, and still a lonely building.
What else can we incorporate, anything in the parking lot?
Or, or, or construction methods.
Heat pumps, maybe.
Interior heat pumps. See, I don't know how you're feeling.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if that's been decided yet. Once again, the developer is still, he has options on the end client, which is going to have a say on what the building is going to look like, so.
This building uses heat pumps to heat and cool. And that's obviously retrofitted, because this was the high school.
Right. Yeah, uh, once again, uh-
You'll discuss it with-
I'll discuss it with the architect and the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, I, we really need to start looking at how we're building new stuff.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, Krena, you want to?
Yeah, that, uh, that's, uh, those are the changes for the report. The decision is also, the resolution is in the packet. Um, at the top of page two, I have the finding for the parking waiver. Calling out the two parking spaces to be relocated and the, uh, board waiving the, the third space that's being lost, uh, in cross-access. And the conditions of approval for changes to the site plan, um, I wrote it up as two separate curb cuts, but I'll edit the final, um, to, to reflect the-
Why don't you go through the?
Yeah, so changes to the site plan, uh, A, uh, I'll change the two separate curb cuts to just moving the, uh, entry/exit driveway further, further west. The, um, the street sign, I mean, uh, either, either moving it, relocating it, or, or adding, uh, an additional one fifty to the town and the DOT. The fire hydrant and the fire water service, um, to satisfy the fire district and fire marshal. Indicate the fire zone or fire lane if needed. Um, and that's for the fire marshal's, uh, response. Uh, relocate the two, um, parking spaces, uh, lost to cross-access, uh, yes.
No, no, sorry.
Uh, cross-access in the aisle. Um, relocate the EV charging stations, but I think that if that can't happen-
We don't need to do that.
Uh, calling out the bollards, uh, for the EV, uh, stations, which are in, in the plan, but not called out. And I think the fire marshal had a comment about that.
He did? What'd he say?
Just making sure that they were called out and specified. They were drawn graphically, but they weren't, um, language. Yeah.
See.
Um, and then- Provide the, the, the plan to apply cross-access as opposed to future cross-access. To the changes to the building plans, um, requesting they add a note to address the interior lighting and, and how they're going to mitigate that with the schedule and any, anything else they might have. Three-year changes to the landscape plans, uh, indicate the minimum caliber of tree to be three and a half inches. Um, update any additional existing trees that can be saved after inventory. Um, see the continuous row of four-foot-high boxwoods along the Willow Road and the five-to-six-foot-high junifers, um, along the adjacent driveway. That was D. And then any revisions to the landscape via cross-access. Uh, changes to the lighting plan, um, note the lighting to be, LED lighting to be twenty-seven hundred Kelvin, reducing the fourteen-foot-high poles to ten feet. C is, uh, updating, any updated lighting specs due to those changes. The, and then D is the, uh, again, the interior lighting now. E is reduce any light levels, uh, regarding trespass limits and, and averages to meet the code. For general conditions, I have, uh, compliance with the fire marshal, all HVAC mechanical to be screened. Uh, any signage to, uh, have planning board review and approval. Compliance with the dark sky town code, town code dark sky requirements, no dusted-on lighting. F is sort of redundant. I just said E, but in a different way and didn't, you know, removed it. So I'll merge those. Uh, G, all LED, uh, twenty-seven hundred Kelvin, no additional lighting on the property. Some of these are, yeah, that one can go too, excuse me. Uh, no public address, sound system, outdoor amplification, uh, arrange a pre-construction meeting with the town engineer. Side inspections at the various stages and responsibility of the, of the owner to reach out to the engineering division. Six are the items to be submitted, uh, as a condition of approval, which are the lighting specs, the future cross-access covenant, the engineering fee, a title certification, and a mortgage consent if applicable. Town attorney, legal documents, and the, uh, note of affidavit by the landowner. Uh, six sets of plans for, uh, signature along with the statement. And then finally, prior to COO, uh, maintenance bond of two years, not to be submitted.
So we don't make any reference to the sidewalk? Installation of the sidewalk pending DOT, I think we need to include that. We don't say anything about signage?
There is, yeah, there was.
Signage, any, any signage to be reviewed and approved by the planning board.
And then what about installing, uh, the cross-access?
Uh, yeah, I have that in the change of plans.
You have that in?
Yeah. So, to update the plans to reflect, uh, uh, cross-access rather than calling out future cross-access.
H, one H, I think.
It's one. One H?
Yep.
I can go, I don't know if you want it to be more specific.
The plans, you talk about the plans reflecting it, but I'm saying installing it.
Plan showing the installation.
Yeah, okay, I can, I can.
Yeah.
I can clarify it.
And the signage reference is five C, if you want to look at that, make sure that's.
Yeah, five C. All signage is subject to. Is the sign on the pla, on the, um, you, the elevations as a huge sign?
Yeah, they had it in as a, a placeholder.
Yes. We don't, we don't have an end client, we, so we can't comment on signage yet.
Building, right?
Until.
It's on the building, um, no other, uh, signage, no.
No monument sign, no.
No, and we don't plan on putting a monument sign. It just depends on, uh.
With the tenant.
What is that, maybe? It's, it's a little hard to make that decision.
Okay.
Prenta, one, one minor note, but I think it's an important note. Charging stations we're imposing typically on the periphery of the site. There's one particular company that designs its charging station as white plastic internally illuminated charging station. I'm not mentioning names. Mine's with Mesla.
So no illuminated.
No internal illumination on the charging stations. I could see that become a, an issue. Grabbing the lighting now. Trying to avoid illuminating internally illuminated signs and we're telling people to put them in.
Any other questions, comments on?
Yeah, I, I think, George, still what's missing, I mean, we've incorporated some of the language, you know, me, some of the things we usually ask for in the. We had a general statement for incorporating, you know, green infrastructure into, you know, into site plan approvals, which is missing from this. Now, I know we have, we have a couple EV stations, but I still think we should have that blanket statement, which was quite substantial.
Sustain, the sustainability, yeah, that should be included.
Solar power.
I have it in the staff report, you're saying include it.
Always.
Always in the, in the decision. Because we, we're also asking you to look at, um, you know, how you use water on the site, for example. And, you know, planting shrubs, it doesn't require a lot of watering. Hopefully, we're going to see a, a, a move towards a different way of getting rid of stormwater through low-impact drainage development rather than, you know, the typical. Put everything back in. So I want to have, keep putting that in as a, in the final approval for the site plan.
We have that paragraph.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll look at that. I mean, groundwater here is a little on the high side.
Yeah.
Uh, so there's some challenges too, so.
Any other questions?
No.
Do you have any questions for us?
I'll move it.
I don't know.
Motion to approve as edited by Dennis, second by Gloriam, all in favor.
Aye.
Close extensions, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, you're up with number three, fourteen fifty-six SRR.
Yeah, I'm, uh, still working with, um, Susanna Herman, uh, to get revised plans. This is the one where the, uh, we have a, um, it, it's a commercial property and it used to be that you could transfer in development rights to get up to sixty-five percent clearing. But the, um, because that's what we, because we only allow fifty percent, the Pine Barrens allows sixty-five. The Pine Barrens did away with that altogether. Uh, so now you have to go in for a hardship if you exceed the fifty percent. So, um, we're looking at revising the plans. So we're just going to do an extension of the action deadline until April twenty-fourth.
Is that enough, Anthony, April twenty-fourth?
I don't know, but, um, that's what she asked for.
Yeah. Well, you know, that means getting some kind of a decision from Pine Barrens.
Well, certainly, um, something from Susanna looking that we're able to make the change, so.
Okay, all right. So motion to extend by Gloriam?
Motion, yes.
Second by David, all in favor. Close extensions, five and six, six in favor, one absent. And we have Claire. Two cell towers.
Uh, well, the first, uh, three towers today, but Homeland Towers is first, the, the Flanders. That's the one we deemed incomplete last week. Um, that's the one in the core preservation area. And so they will have to secure, um, the Pine Barrens first, and then you also relinquish lead agency to Pine Barrens. They're going to take that. But I just wanted to make sure, um, and you said that in your, when you notified Pine Barrens is that you wanted to make sure that your issues related to, um, the environment and SECRE were, um, related to them. So I've prepared some documents. Um, I'm going to give you, um, the staff, the pre-submission report. And, um, so that was, we had identified some of the environmental issues with the project, so that's the first I don't want to give you.
Thank you.
Um, second thing I'm going to give you is the, um.
I know I'm aware of the twenty.
Just laying part two, just so, um, we can just look at what you would do if you were, you know, looking at this.
That's right here at the.
I just went over the ones identified, what I think might have an impact.
Um, based upon your pre-submission report and some of the sites.
Good.
Do you have a, should I just lay out a site plan too, just so you look at? You can see the aerial. Um, this is the, the existing junkyard. Flanders Road.
Oh, yeah, okay, yes.
Yeah, and then they're going to put, um, approximately in the front on the east side, they are proposing the, um, the cell tower at a hundred and fifty feet tall.
On the junkyard property.
On the junkyard property, yes.
Right in the cor, right in the front.
In the front, um, approximately fifty feet from the, the front property line on the east side. Um, as you can see from the aerial, um, there are a couple houses on the west side. There actually are, and one parcel has three houses on it, and that's the closest to, um, to the property. About two hundred and fifty feet away, three hundred feet away. And then there's two other parcels that have houses that are also within the four hundred and fifty foot falls.
So in the fall zone, yeah.
The setback that we try to maintain from residential.
What's the zoning of that vacant property, to the east of it?
The east, uh, CR two hundred.
So it is res, is this residential?
Residential all across, yeah.
Oh, yeah, CR six, that's CR two hundred down here.
So at some point, that could come in for a, for a subdivision.
No, to the east is county land. This is the parkland. This is, this is county parkland to the north and to the east.
Okay.
And, uh, this is Pine of Park, Pine Barrens and Core Preservation, it will never be developed, obviously. So, um, it was purchased by them for, for proclaim purposes.
So Claire, what kind of a CO are they operating under?
Uh, that is a junkyard that was established pre-existing, but then reestablished under a ZBA decision. Um, because they took some of the developments outside and they put a building on the property and had some of the development inside. So there was a DBA decision kind of blessing the site plan. Um, I'm going to pull it, pull the site plan because I think the front buffer was part of the site plan to maintain that. It's part of the planning board review of the project, but I just need to double-check that with them.
So that would mean that you couldn't put the monopole there.
Yeah, but I think this, um, right, whether it's fifty feet or whatever that setback is, I'm not, we're not sure of, but. The ZBA did not require that setback. It may be something the planning board requires, so we have to double-check that, obviously.
So we did a pre-app report and we want to make sure that we, pre-submission, that we have enough information in that for the Pine Barrens commission to review.
Right, right, you're not doing the full review, but I think you're just saying, okay, here's some, here's some issues. This is not, I mean, I'll attach our pre-submission report, I think it's good just to have that background. Also, I, Jackie suggested I just attach an aerial, you know, so they can see.
See this, yeah.
So I'll do that. Um, but these are, this is, it's just one page, but these are the ones I, I identified if I can read through, I'm sorry, um.
Is there someone here?
Yeah, Kevin, or, um, there is Robert Guardioso, or have, um, David Penny from Schneider Law is, is.
Just a minute.
Okay, thank you.
My pretty woods. Perfect for my program that's going on.
Was there any discussion ever of moving it back farther off the road?
I think.
I can't remember.
Yeah, we didn't have that discussion, but, you know, in order, if this was the site for them, that's an if, right? Because it's develop, development pursuant to the Pine Barrens, whether it's in the front or the back, they're considering that development, but.
Last time to relinquish, uh, lead agency, uh, but I don't remember, what are they before the zoning board for?
Uh, more than one primary use of a property or residential.
Number of uses, okay.
You can only have one. And they have a junkyard now, right?
Yeah.
Now, if we required, I mean, part of the SECRE review, the environmental review. How do you do that in a junkyard? Do you have to clear the junkyard? Do you? How do you?
Now, if we require.
Can you hear us?
Let's not conversation, let's not conversation.
It sounds like the YouTube is lagging.
Oh, can you ta, oh, can you take? Robert, can you hear us?
So Claire, he's representing a private law, a private firm that's building this?
Yes, exactly. I'm going to go forward.
Yeah.
Just, okay? Um, so impact on land, visual impact on land, where the view shed is locally important to the community. Potential impact on the fall zone and adjacent activities, including industrial use. Stop me if you want me to add anything or.
Where are you in the?
I'm sorry, I have a, I have a single sheet that has the.
Got it, got it, yeah.
Impact on aesthetic resources, proposed cell towers obviously different from and sharp contrast to the current surrounding open space land patterns to the north, south, and east, and the residential uses to the west. Procedural tower will be visible to many users of aesthetic resources, including Suffolk County Parkland, and the proposed land use could significantly reduce their enjoyment of the significant aesthetic qualities of this, oh, not education, open space area. Loss of important community view sheds, this portion of Flanders Roads is recommended in the nineteen ninety-nine comprehensive update for designation for scenic road corridor designation, and the site is located at the beginning of a significant scenic area. Scenic resources are identified as an area of avoidance in the town's Southampton Wireless Master Plan. Impact on historical archaeological, it is in New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area Board will require, I guess?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is one B archaeological investigation.
Southampton Wireless Master Plan.
One A and B.
Uh, one A is the study. So B is the investigation. Impact on open space recreation, potential impact on scenic resources, Flanders Road. The site is immediately located across the street from and to the west of Suffolk County Parklands. Impact on critical environmental areas, potential impact for the property being located in the central Pine Barrens core preservation area. Proposal constitutes development for Central Pine Barrens Commission. Potential impact of the property being located in the aqua protection overlay district. The site has been historically cleared of vegetation associated with the existing use of the site junkyard. Consistency with community plans, location of the proposed cell tower conflicts with the officially adopted plans and goals, including the nineteen ninety-nine Com, Town Master Plan and the Town Wireless Master Plan. Proposed facility does not meet the required setback from five existing residences. Residence one is two hundred and forty-three feet setback where four fifty is required. Residence two is three hundred and six feet setback. Residence three is three hundred and eight feet setback. Residence four is four hundred and twenty. And residence five is four hundred and forty feet setback where four fifty is required. Proposed facility does not meet the setbacks to the property line in two instances, forty-two feet where a hundred and fifty feet is required and a hundred and four feet where a hundred and fifty feet is required. Proposal is the second use on the site where only one use is permitted pursuant to three thirty, six A of the Town Code. Proposal will require variance from the Town Zoning Board of Appeals. May set a precedence for future projects by opening a cellular tower in an important area for preservation of views. Loss of important community veg, view sheds as referenced in the Town Master Plan. This portion of Flanders Road is recommended in the nineteen ninety-nine comprehensive plan update for designation for scenic road destination. The site is located as a start of a significant scenic area. Consistency with community character, proposal is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape. Procedural tower is obviously different from and sharp contrast to the current surrounding open space land powder patterns to the north, south, east, and the residential uses to the west.
Claire, um, on the impact on critical environmental areas.
Yeah.
The, the junkyard reference is just kind of a throwaway, and I think it's so much more important than that.
Mm-hmm.
That, um, particularly with, uh, the environmental impact of a junkyard, uh, being on site for how many years? Whenever it was approved. It got a variance for that.
That's not part of the application, but it's the fact that it's there.
Is a potential for creating, uh, yeah, do we want, would there be an investigation about the conditions?
Well, you'd have to, you can't segment this.
Yeah.
You know, if we're going to, if SECRE is going to be done, you can't just cut off the little piece where the cell tower is going to be, because then you're segmenting SECRE. So I think it's very much a part of an investigation.
I mean, that suggests opening up the entire app, application to understand what this junkyard is doing to the aquifer and.
Absolutely. Yeah, they're not subdividing this piece off.
Yeah.
They, they want it on their property.
So I think this is an opportunity for the town to look at it.
Step in.
In two thousand twenty-five and say, wait a second. This is not.
If you look at what it was like in ninety-four, and then you look at what it's like now, it's a whole lot.
A lot different.
Basier. Wow, a lot more stuff in there.
Well, they have, the way they interpret these junkyards is your, they consider the entire site as, as a junkyard. In other words, as you add more cars, it's not considered an expansion.
Right.
So they can go corner to corner with cars.
Right.
Right. And they ha, and they have.
They should consider the proper aisles. I just don't think they have the proper aisles.
No, just one, one road coming in and.
Yeah, exactly.
Clear the whole thing.
Under, um.
Do you want to just review that language? Or do you want to just, yeah, finish your idea and then?
Yeah, but the other idea, other comment is that, um, you say consistency, uh, blah, blah, blah. You have ZBA, right?
The ZBA at the top, the top of the second page said the proposal will require variance.
Second use.
Yep.
Okay, that's.
That's good.
It was the second use.
What I say is there's existing, um, junkyard as a potential impact on the environment and this. Critical environmental areas? Existing consideration of the junkyard's impact through the submission of an environmental assessment?
Yep.
All right.
Full environmental assessment. Okay. Okay, so you're going to attach this to the?
Pre-submission report.
Yes.
Okay. I would put it first.
Pre-submission and aerial, and I'll have a resolution that incorporates this in.
Okay.
Okay, and I have that prepared, so you can have it done today. Did we ever get the applicant's name?
I don't know.
We did our best, technology.
Try.
So what are we going to vote, be voting on?
I'm going to say this is going to be your environmental report to the Pine Barrens.
Okay.
Do we adopt this by resolution?
Yeah, we have to. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloriam, all in favor. Close extensions, uh, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you.
That's great. And now we move to number five, Wilderness Trail. Oh, that's Anthony, yeah.
Yeah, I took, I don't know who worked on it previously, but, uh, you might recall this is a landlocked parcel, um, Seven Ponds Road. And it was in for, I believe, a, a three-lot subdivision, you know, one, two, three, right down here. So that, there was an access issue, so they're before the zoning board right now in order to get, um, approval to build, uh, or to subdivide, uh, with, you know, without frontage and with an easement. But I'm, but working with Carl, um, I think you said you're going to provide information about where that easement is coming from, right?
We have the information, but I'll.
Carl, give us, give us your name for the record formally. Come on up.
Carl, Nacasa eight sixty, Montauk Highway, Watermill, New York, for the applicant. So, um, the zoning board is that, you're doing SECRE, this is referred to you right now.
Yeah, so the, the, we're in the, they coordinated SECRE with the planning board in this case because I felt like we wanted to hammer. because I felt like we wanted to hammer down access before we finish up SECA, so that's, that's the reason why.
Access is to this lot, there's two actual ways, there's a established right-of-way to the north. That's one type of access, but there's also a road reverter, or a, uh, future de- uh, irrevocable road dedication along that wilderness path up to where it's green. And then that four-lot subdivision established a future road over those lots to, to the access this lot. That's how access is primarily going to be gained. But we are still working with the zoning board, um, uh, there's a lot of interest from the neighbors, nat- naturally, we've been working with them.
When was that four-lot subdivision done?
That was in the eight, eight, I wanna say the mid-eighties.
Yeah. Does that, the whole road reverts to a town road, or just that portion?
So, the, if you zoom in, the portion in green. So up to that, that looks like, uh, the, the one that looks like a bunch of flags.
Yeah.
That's a future road that was established by that subdivision. If you go back to that, Anthony, the block road there.
Yes.
That is a irrevocable off-road dedication.
Wilderness Trail.
Wilderness Trail. So, if the town, we've talked to the highway department, they were willing to absorb that with improvements that my client's willing to make. If that doesn't happen, that right-of-way, that the road, the future road, or the dedicated road is, uh, no, the other part of it.
Right.
The, see it says R O W, that part, no, to the right, right, off the subdivision map.
Off the sub, what are we talking about?
No, up.
I don't know what you're asking, tell me what you're looking for.
The arrow up.
See where it says R O W?
No, I don't see anything, oh, right here.
So that area is, uh, an art right-of-way owned by Joe Gass. So, we are talking with him about getting access to the right-of-way in the event the town doesn't accept the irrevocable offer, which they said they would.
But there is an offer, yes.
There is an irrevocable offer, that was, the adjacent subdivision required that. This subdivision, when the planning board divided these four lots, they created this future road that gives access to this, so they didn't create this landlocked 15-acre parcel, but.
So that was in 1980-something?
I think it was 86?
Eighty-two, I think.
Eighty-two.
So like 40 years ago, right?
Yes.
And that would go through the Town Law 200 process to be improved, do you know?
The.
To bring it up to town road standards.
The, the future road?
Right.
I guess, well, through, it would go through road review.
Right, right, yeah.
Or not Town Law 200.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Because it wouldn't have to be accepted into the highway system. But, uh, the, the irrevocable offer is, is, is there, and you don't need Town Law 200. It's already been offered as part of the subdivision approval. So all you need is the town to accept it in, which they're willing to do with certain improvements. And my client would be obligated to undertake those.
So we really need to look at that subdivision, the whatever.
Yeah, well, that's what I was telling, because what I was doing.
Do a parcel on the other subdivision, you'll see that, yeah.
Um, because we're gonna do an extension of the SECA action deadline, so we could work out some of these, uh, issues. Just to make, I just, the key is to make sure that access is going to be accomplished.
Well, that would obviate, if it became a road, it would obviate, having.
Zoning board.
Make a decision.
No, it wouldn't, because the road only goes to.
Up to where the cul-de-sac is.
It still has no road access.
Yeah, though, she's saying this piece here.
I don't know that there's an irrevocable offer there, it just says future road.
It was, the irrevocable offer up to here, and then this was the.
Future road.
Future. There's your issue, now I remember, yeah.
Right, so if that, so if that's questioned, those neighbors are not going to be happy.
Well, they weren't, we had a, we had a public hearing on this.
We've had a public hearing here, a public hearing of the zoning board.
Yeah.
They are not happy.
No.
We're working with some of them, uh, and parcel two is actually part of the application, and is offering an easement strictly over his lot, which would obviate the need to get access over parcel three, which resolves the issue.
Now, what about the Gaza piece you have?
Gaza owns the right-of-way, so that roadway, Gaza did the subdivision to the east, and reserved for himself the right-of-way, that lot just above, uh, where your cursor is, that lot is Joe Gass.
So you need that right-of-way to get in, don't you?
Unless the town accepts the offer. And then, which case.
So the offer to the town is over the piece that's kind of.
Which case, that would become a town road. And then we use, the end of the town road is where that, that right of, it's a right-of-way, let's call it, for this lot begins. So it's, it's very complicated.
And it's, the language is very loose.
Very loose.
Would you have to improve that?
It was before you were the planning board.
Yes.
You'd have to improve those flags.
Have Christine, have you seen any of that, Christine? The language of that subdivision?
Flags, Carl? On the four-lot subdivision, you'd have to improve those flags.
Well, the right of way.
Yeah, yes, those would all be subject to, to road review.
Well, you'd bring them up, why don't you just bring them up?
The whole thing.
Count specs and then the town can take those flags in.
Well, there's not an offer, you'd have to do a Town Law 200 then, actually.
Because I, when you say the highway department would take them in, I think it would have to be brought up to town road standards. Yeah. Not just, you know, kind of road review does minimal improvements.
Yes.
But, but that'll cover only the piece that Gaza owns, and then that piece coming into the cul-de-sac to service four lots. That's what a town will take into the highway system at this point, except the right-of-way.
Yes, so what looks like a bunch of flags, that's the future, that's the right-of-way that would go through road review. Prior to that is the future road that would be brought up to town specs.
When you say future road, though, that's the iffy.
Well, it's a, there would, no, that has an irrevocable offer of dedication, so that's been dedicated to the town, they just have to accept it.
Are those flags on the four lot, are they, is there a reverter to the?
That is a right-of-way to.
Oh, there's no reverter to the town?
No reverter to the town. So that's why it gets.
Landlocked parcels, huh?
Well, it's not landlocked.
No, it's got access.
They got two points of access.
And then to the north, there's actually.
All right, let's look at the north one.
There was some.
You have to go on that subdivision, and we actually are working with.
Another subdivision?
That's a separate subdivision up there.
Yeah.
How many parcels in that?
Three or four. You wanna pull up that map?
Do you have some elevation issues with, and that's.
Topographic issues?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That has to be, it's very, it's not great.
It's steep, or what?
So, see, this is a, it's, yeah, there's some high points, some very low points.
Comes up to here.
Yeah, it goes right, see, it goes right to the lot there, uh, Anthony?
This is your lot right here.
That's right.
Then, okay, yeah.
I see how it benefits the lot right there, the right-of-way.
Got like, what, 20-foot frontage, or?
I don't think even that.
Oh.
Maybe exactly 20 feet.
It's, it's, yeah, it's exactly 20 feet.
So that could only service that lot.
Right.
To the north. And interestingly, we are in contract, subject to subdivision, with the neighbor to the law, if you wanna. And so he's going to, that, if you go up, that guy. So he's going to, uh, he's now part of this and will be cooperative and supportive.
So in contract to purchase one lot, or to give you more access of that lot?
Purchase.
Oh, okay.
Lot to the north, subject, of course, to the subdivision.
Uh, you know, the, uh, just, I just wanna make sure that we really hammer this down, when the planning board's, if they're gonna do their SECA, that we, we need to know that access is secured.
Well, it's pretty straightforward.
Clear, clear as, you know.
Clear as can be, but looking at the original four-lot subdivision is critical to see what that document says.
You know, I, you know, what I'm asking Carl is, I initially was doing an extension of the SECA action deadline to 4/24. Should we do the first meeting in May? Are we gonna be able to know for certain all this stuff in the next two weeks?
Those, those documents were submitted, but way back, when we, I mean, it was over a year and a half ago.
Why don't you resubmit them to me?
I will resubmit them. It was over a year and a half ago we did the pre-submission.
All right.
Do you have the four lot, do you have documents on the four-lot subdivision in your files at all?
Yeah, we have all that.
You have all of them?
I think those were submitted with the application, but we'll resubmit them, because it's been months.
It has, it was, yeah, it was during the, the pre.
I would say May, I mean.
Let's do May 8th, let's just do a, an extension of the SECA action deadline until May 8th, that gives us time.
Well, at least we have an underst- a little bit of an understanding.
Yeah, no, this is, this is complicated, the, the zoning board grappled with this one, so.
They're still grappling.
That's true, that is true.
They've been grappling, I think we've been with them for a year.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
So a motion to, uh, for the Wilderness Trail to extend to May 8th? Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extensions, six in favor, one absent. And then you've got number six, Anthony, 26 Hillside Road.
Yeah, so. I'm gonna recuse myself, Chairman.
Okay.
Previously, the application incomplete. Uh, this is a subdivision in Chinacock Hills, R60 zoning district. As you can see, this property has existing accessway, tennis court, and I believe two residential structures. Um, they came in for a three-lot subdivision that we previously.
Well, these are all the odd-shaped lots, right?
So, you know, it's hard to see here, but you would have sort of two lots to the north and then one, uh, to the south. Whether or not the existing residence is staying there, I'm not really sure yet, but, um, you know, they finally gave us a revised map. I wanted topo, just because, you know, in Chinacock Hills, things get, uh, be a little weird over there.
It's archaeologically sensitive area.
Presuming it is, but let's.
It is, lists.
Did I list it there?
You did.
And this is between, was it Greenfield and Hill Station?
Yeah, Hill Station.
Right.
Yeah, Hill Station comes.
Right, and Greenfield's at the right side, the eastern intersection is Greenfield.
What is the parcel to the south of that?
You know, it's so funny, it's interesting here, Jackie, when you look, it is in the New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area, but interestingly, that's not, it's just outside of the, uh, the Cultural Resource Protection Area from Chinacock Hills.
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
You can sort of see here, this is, they labeled it.
The fort is near there.
So, um, in this, what was your question, Jackie, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
What's the?
What's to the south, it looks like a summit?
That big parcel of dollars, yeah.
That looks like, uh, some personal recreational uses there. Putting greens. Putting greens, they look like putting greens.
There was a big estate built there.
Oh, yeah.
Three, four, five years ago.
Yeah, they're still doing activity, it looks like, perhaps.
Well, that looks pretty clear-cut, doesn't it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, this isn't, um, aquifer, um, so, if it's going for a build, it's probably going for a building permit, it's not gonna be questioned or cleared. But I'm recommending that we deem this application complete, and schedule the hearing for May 8th.
Motion.
Okay, motion by, uh, Dennis, second by George, all in favor. Post extensions, six in favor, and one absent.
One recusal?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, automatically did that. Five in favor, one recusal, one absent. Claire.
So, do you want to come up to me? Let me introduce you, so this is a project, uh, there's two in a row. Um.
Hello.
Aye.
The town Southampton is, uh, has gone into contract with a company that is proposing two cell towers. One in, at the North Sea, uh, transfer station, and the other one that is in the south, um, at the Chinacock Fishing Dock, or fishing dock. So the one at, uh, the North Sea Transfer Station is proposed, um. As you enter the transfer station driveway, it's proposed on the left-hand side, um, 100, about 150 feet, uh, in from property line.
Staging it right now for the solar project.
Yeah, that's, yes, exactly.
It's all cleared out.
Can you just identify yourself for the record?
Keith Kito, Tower Point.
So he submitted the application, so it would be in approximately in this area, um, setback 100, it's 140-foot tower with whip antennas on it, and, uh, it's setback 150 feet, so it meets the setbacks there, um.
And the whip antennas are just for public communication, so fire department, police department, all carrier equipment is internal in the ball. It's a stealth structure.
But it, it increases the height of it by at least 10 feet, right?
So that, that's the total of the 150 feet is with the whip antennas on it.
With them?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's subject, you know, they might only have five-foot whip antennas, so that's up to the police department and fire department to decide.
But there is in the code an opportunity to come back and add 20 feet, right? And another day, so we're really looking at 170 feet.
Uh, it is extendable per federal law, yes.
Right, so.
But all the carriers are already reserved in the 140 to 80 feet, so we do not see us extending it.
Right now.
Yes.
But we have to, we're planning, right?
Oh, yes.
So we're planning for the future.
So just zooming back out again, the nearest houses are more than 600 feet in the west-hand side, so more than meets the 450 feet approximately, um, the setback. And then the, there is proper vacant property to the south, but likewise, more than, uh, the 600 feet to the south. So it meets all the setbacks, um, I have an application, um, I'd like to schedule for a public hearing to enlist the public input, uh, before your application, uh.
So it would be sited between where the new solar panels are and Major's Path?
This is just the staging area, this is a vacant piece now, this, you know, this is the solar, the solar went on the, went on the capped landfill, this is vacant, this area, this just shows you where there is staging.
The solar panels are to the right.
They're gonna be on the capped landfill.
Okay.
Yeah, so a new aerial from 2025 is gonna show it.
It's like directly opposite the municipal, or the Waste Management Building, then?
Correct, directly opposite the Waste Management.
So is this like, so this is a town of Southampton site?
This is town of Southampton.
And an, an application is for lease of the property?
Correct.
To do, to do that?
Yes.
The town, the town is leasing it, yeah, to generate revenue.
And to, and have self-service in North Sea, which is, we all know is a, is a.
Horrible.
Yeah.
So, where you've cited it, you feel obviously that that's the best site for it, as opposed to moving it further away from the, um, the transfer station building?
Yes, so that was worked with everyone in the town, town board, to pick that location. So we didn't, as developers, we actually didn't pick that location, that was just the whole town board picked this location.
Town board picked it.
Yeah. And that's what, it kind of came out of the RFP, this is where we want it, and we just said, okay.
Right, well, I think it should be moved. I think you've got a wide-open space there, and you've tucked it close to.
Buildings.
The transfer station buildings. Certainly could go on the other side of the staging area.
So more north.
Yeah. Claire, isn't that what we talked about in, in, when I was looking at it in your office?
You had touched about meeting more of a setback in anticipation of the 20 feet being added, right? So 160.
Right.
So you could do that, that, that's an option.
Well, do we have, are we constrained by town board, uh, contract?
There is, uh, in your case, uh, there, there is full review, you have full review on the site, there's special exception. So as it not meeting your setbacks, you can, you can say that, but it's obviously right now, as proposed, it's meeting the setbacks.
It has no impact on the solar itself, because I'm not quite sure where you're putting this.
Um, it, this is going in, I know, it's, it's hard, but it's going in this general area, there's a lea- you know, the Leachades Pond is here, so that does restrain you from moving it too much. And then this is where the solar is, on the capped landfill, yeah.
So it's.
Yeah.
So they've indicated it to be right smack in the front, close to the Major's Path?
Yes, it is close to Major, it's 149 feet from Major's Path, yeah.
Put, put the arrow on the transfer station buildings, please?
Yes, right here.
So that's the transfer station?
That's one, that's the office building, and then there's the, the actual transfer portion.
South of that is the SYS.
Yeah, then you zoom out.
I got it, okay.
And there's SYS.
Got it, got it, got it.
Which is a separate, it's a separate, I call, when we initially started reviewing anything on the property, we call it South, North Sea Park, that's what you see, but the transfer station's more apt, because it's going adjacent to the transfer station.
So can you tell us where the slabs in the cabinets are going to be for this?
Just adjacent to it.
Just, everything's gonna be in a 50 by 50 compound, in that, pretty much the staging area. I'm calling that the staging area, if you zoom in, Claire.
Yep.
That was where, uh, the solar company was just storing it, so.
So that's where you're putting it?
Exactly, on that flat ground, to, to almost the northeast of that compound, so that's a, it's actually a huge spot, yes.
That used to be wooded.
Internal.
That, that was wooded, and I guess cleared for this project, not your project, but for the.
Staging.
I, I used to have an office in the Waste Management Building, so.
It's been cleared for a bit, that's 2021.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Twenty sixteen.
So, it's been that way a long time?
It's been a bit, it's been a bit, yeah.
So, looking at this map, Claire, go back to the staging area slide.
Okay.
You're proposing to put the tower?
Almost to that northeast, if, right in that, we're clear circling, yes.
Okay.
And all the equipment's internal there, as well, uh, within the fifty by fifty compound.
But that's not what you show here, unless I'm crazy.
That's what we're showing there.
Proposed concealed monopole in front.
That's a zoom out, I mean, that's a zoom out piece, and then the, did I give a second cyclone?
I mean, there's this monopole.
Yeah, but I'm looking here, it says proposed tower, okay, and it's here, here's the staging area.
No, this is the, this is the mound, this is the landfill.
That's a landfill with topography and solar.
This is the staging area.
This is the staging area, yeah, so this is just looking from the small screen.
This is what you did.
This is Major's Path here, now this is like.
Yeah.
Okay, got it, got it, okay, I get it.
No, it's gone.
Oh, yeah, so, all the solar stuff is on the landfill now.
That's gone. Before they built it, they put their solar stuff there, and so that's gone.
The only thing would be, i- if there is a potential for this at some point to be increased by another twenty feet in the future, under the code, should we at least make allowance for that? So, that is a hundred and seventy feet off Major's Path?
Mm-hmm, it would be only hundred, it'd have to be a hundred, for the structure itself, which is one forty right now proposed, right?
A one sixty.
It would be one sixty, and then so it would be sixty, and right now it's one forty-seven, forty-nine, so I guess just eleven feet. Do you think that's doable?
Um, yes, that would be, I would just say that would be an as-built, so we would just move it ten feet, the foundation, ten feet east, you know, that would, I would say that would be an as-built, uh.
At least this way, if you, if you're, if you, it does get increased in the future, it doesn't, you know, it, Major's Path is not within the fault zone.
Yeah, that sounds good, so we could have a, we'll, we'll have the proposal at the one forty-nine for the hearing, and then, uh, that'll be condition of approval, if you guys are interested, yeah, correct, that's great. So, um, why don't I?
I know we never do, Claire, but we should, uh, like to make reference to the wireless master plan, the number of the code in the plan.
Uh.
Like, is it a three thirty number, or?
Yeah, three thirty, three hundred.
You're right on three thirty.
Three hundred, three hundred, yes, three hundred, I mix it up with science, which is two hundred.
So, three thirty, three hundred?
Yeah.
Just a reference of that.
In the, in the description?
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Oh, there's one.
So, the first section would be the North Sea Park to deem a complete and scheduled for a public hearing on May eighth, which is the third.
Okay. So, motion? Motion by Gloria, and second by David, all in favor.
Hi.
Six in favor, one absent, May eighth, public hearing.
And the next one?
And you're here for the next one?
Yeah.
All right, Keith Kito is here for Chinacock Town Fishing Dock Wireless Facility.
Okay, so this is the Chinacock, uh, fishing, uh, commercial docks, and it is a property, um, owned by the town of Southampton, the portion to the east is R W B, and that's where the actual dock is, and, and has the docking facilities. So, the proposal is to put it in the existing, uh, parking lot, is that correct?
Right, if you, can you zoom in more? So, you can see how that boardwalk kind of goes out, and it makes a ninety-degree turn down, or south. Uh, we're actually gonna be changing that ramp to go straight east from there, and the tower's gonna be going almost right there.
Okay.
Uh, this is a smaller compound, uh, uh, I think it's forty by twenty-seven, uh, it would be a hundred-foot mon, um, stealth tower, uh, and all equipment will be within that kind of grassy ramp area right there.
What's in that building now?
It was the.
They kind of use it.
For the harbor master, for the, yeah, for to run the dock.
So, I looked at this when Claire pulled it up on her desk, and you've got, um, what is the land, Claire, uh, the sand, sand area?
So, this is, um, uh, this is obviously park, the town.
Mm-hmm.
This is open space for the town of Southampton, but it is zoned O S C, that also allows it to do, to be able to put the cell tower in this area too. But, you know, this is, this is.
It would seem that that could be a good location for it, have you considered that? As opposed to the middle of the parking lot?
You know, when we were talking with the board, we did, uh, say that, it's better, it, I believe by law, we have to be behind a bulkhead.
By law, you have to be behind?
Yes.
Oh, it would be, this wouldn't require a wetlands permit.
Yes.
Because it's so far away, as you get closer to here, you're gonna have the wetlands issue here, so this is actually getting closer to wetlands. If you locate it here, here, you would meet, the setback is only fifty feet from the side.
But are there any?
Outside the jurisdiction.
Are there any concerns about having it, um, you know, adjacent to a building that's occupied on occasion? It is, as far as if it's falling? The harbor master's building is occupied once in a while.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Um, so, we, we always build next to fire departments, uh, these towers are designed to not collapse over, they kink, it just gets the wind load off. But at, they withstand a hundred and fifty mile per hour winds, uh, a hundred and fifty mile per hour winds on Betroud, we're not gonna be worried about.
Everybody, everybody is gonna be off Betroud.
So, uh, yes, but those, yeah, they're all designed as tower class threes, so.
I don't think that how that building was designed for a hundred and fifty mile, I know that, I worked on that project.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Everybody will be out of their boats hopefully by then.
That's, that would be my only concern, you know, if that's, uh, if that's a concern, that we need to.
So, were they offered another position just to discuss, or was that it?
Um, that was what the town wanted, that was pretty much where they said to do it.
County parking lots just to the east, right?
And then they actually.
This is, this is another dock, I think, and then this is a restaurant.
So, there's actually a fuller, bigger master plan, if you guys seen this, I don't know if I'm speaking out of term, where thi- this tower is actually part of a bigger plan, where they're adding a park there as well with beach access to the south.
Oh, here?
Yes.
Oh, interesting.
So, they're adding park, it's, it's very messy now with the fishermen, um, they're cleaning everything up, they're adding storage units even for, I guess, the commercial fishermen. They're adding a park to the east and a walkover, I believe, to the west. I, Claire, I could probably share those drawings that I've seen.
Okay.
From the town engineer.
I mean, I, I wanna, is that necessary now, do you wanna see that, discuss?
This is gonna be an inhabited area, and there are going to be other, uh, structures. I think it's important, you know, you don't plunk a hundred-foot cell tower in the middle of it, violating a, a fall zone. It, you know, that's not really good thinking, as far as I'm concerned, all the cell towers we look at, we're very concerned with fall zones. And they're mostly in areas where they're not going to impact, or can't be in an area, according to three thirty, three hundred, where they can impact the residents, so I don't know what the town board was thinking about.
There's no residents this year.
It's not residences, this is all.
No, but if they're, if this is gonna be park and park facilities.
Again, with the hundred mile an hour wind, how occupied is the park gonna be? Plus, these things collapse, right?
They don't collapse, they, they pretty much just kink, and it just gives the, uh, wind load off.
Yeah.
So, they, they will never fall over.
I've seen several YouTube, YouTube videos of cell towers going right down in hurricanes.
Were they lattice towers?
You know, our cell tone, cell tower.
This is a stealth monopole. This is a lattice. Latticees are very old, they could have been forty years old.
Has the technology changed, I guess, since we wrote our cell tower laws, maybe, with regard to?
Yes, so we'll see, we get variances if we need to be near buildings.
Well, the fall zones are set in lattice towers.
The fall zone is for monopoles too, we just didn't wanna.
No, but I mean, it was designed, it was spec for spell that.
We call them fall zones, but it's not, it's to achieve a setback from the structure, that's not, not necessarily, the only thing we're worried about is the falling. It's the actually having the setback to, to uses, you know, obviously, the residential use is actually just to establish that big, big setback.
Right, big buffer.
You establish a three hundred percent.
Right.
So, if you put an eighty-foot tower, you'd have a smaller setback, so, um.
So, you're a private company and you're contracting with the town, is that it? What is the name of your company?
All, under all Tower Point.
All Tower Point?
No, just Tower Point.
Tower Point.
Yeah, I guess if you won't mind submitting that information about what the town is doing with the rest of the facility, that way you can have a complete picture when you see it, for the public hearing, does that make sense?
I think so.
I don't know if they adopted it, that was kind of the idea, because they're.
Even if it's a concept.
They're getting a, a, a large amount of capital contribution from the site, along with revenue, so they wanted to do something nice for the residents, you know?
Do we still, does the town still bring those plans to the planning board, I remember when I was here, we used to bring it as a credit, you know, to at least let the planning board know what you're doing.
I don't think Claire even knew about it.
Yeah, I might have been speaking out loud, I don't know if it was, uh.
No, but I mean.
When you build buildings, yes, with, um, other things like parking lots, I'm not quite sure, yeah.
And the restaurant is functioning now, it's an open restaurant? I don't mean seasonal, but it's an.
That's not open, that's Sundays, I think it is. Openings all the way down.
There's, there's another, another restaurant that's.
One closer to the Sundays.
That's Sundays.
Sundays on the bay.
Yeah, but there's another one.
The third restaurant that's always closed.
There's a, one to the west.
Big one there, I think that's, that's closed.
The big white one, that's closed.
This one's closed, this is Sundays, and this is open, yeah.
And then what's in between, Claire, another, another dock, another?
This is a dock, yeah, this is a dock here.
That's a dock, a town dock or a private?
And this is where it breaches.
This is where it breaches, you can see all the sand piles.
Breaches right here, so.
Sunny day, they'll, they have the barricades up.
Yeah.
At Palm Park Beach.
You know, look, Dennis's point is well taken, this road will be with sea rise, it's going to be underwater, we make, we don't even take that into consideration when we discuss these things, which is, it's a kind of blindness.
How many times has it been underwater in the last couple of years?
Yeah.
The reality, the reality is that the town keeps, the town keeps protecting it.
Even in, on sunny, non-storm event day, barricades will be up there.
Right, and there's water, six inches of water.
Will not let you go down. Of course, the Palm Park Bridge is falling down, so. Who knows how long that lasts?
The sky's falling, Dennis.
The Palm Park Bridge, right, so, um, your company, um, do you work in coastal areas?
Mm-hmm, yes, we built be, uh, towers on beaches before.
Any special requirements?
Um, just a flood zone, so we have to be raised above, just like, um, when the town just, uh, redid this area for the dock, they did raise up the electrical, I believe it was, I don't know the exact number, but you raised it up per construction.
So, will your tower be raised up?
Uh, not the, not the actual tower, tower will be, but, but all the electrical communications and, um, meter banks, they will be raised up above the flood. Uh, I would have to get your exact number, it might be four, five feet, uh, I believe it's, because it's a hundred-year flood plain in this area, I think it's.
Is it a hundred, that's interesting.
I can, I can look that up. We got flood zones on this.
The updated flood zones, Claire?
Yes, it will be fourteen feet plus two is sixteen feet?
Sixteen feet above ground.
Mm-hmm.
And that's gonna be right in the middle of the parking lot.
Above, uh, ele, that's the elevation above, um, national, the national thing, so it's not sixteen feet above ground, it's the elevation.
So, sixteen above mean sea level or whatever?
Yes, mean sea level, yeah.
Yeah, that's probably just, originally, it's just, you know, several feet above, so it could be, I don't know.
It's like ten or eleven feet, yeah, altogether, yep.
Is that, is that in the V E zone for, yeah, so you're gonna have to even, even have to construct that in a way that it's, you know, for the V zone.
That's the.
Well, it's definitely a challenging site, engineering wise, it's, it'll be interesting.
So, I'd just say my piece, was there an alternative site considered?
I don't know the answer.
You don't know, we have, we were not at this meeting, so.
Within that parcel?
Well, the town owns that whole area, they own the parking lot, they own the fishing dock, they own the, uh, you may, it's a culture, not a cultural resource, it's a.
And the county owns the area at the end.
Yeah, so the town, the, the town parcel is extensive, you're not limited.
That one parcel's nine, I think nine point two, that's not that far.
Yeah, the town owns the whole parcel.
Whole piece.
I would say, I think the idea behind that from the town is to go where there is already use, right? We wouldn't, yeah, I don't, as a developer, I would rather preserve the beach to the west, I would, I'd rather be in a parking lot. Because if you build a tower over to where the beach is, that technically, you could say was a park to the west, so we're going where there's already use, right? So, we're, we're not really taking away from, um, the community, it's in a used area already, you know? And that, that building is not really very used currently, you know?
I don't know what's in that building and how it's used, I just know it's a structure.
Harbor master.
It's a very occasional use, that, you know, not, I don't say.
No, they're mostly in boats, but, uh, they would be there occasionally to run the, the commercial facility.
So, what's our action here, Claire?
Yes, I, again, have all the information required to process the site plan, special exception application, and recommend some public hearing scheduled.
Pre-submission?
No, uh, site plan, special exception, yeah.
How come it doesn't require pre-submission?
Because it's a town project.
Okay, got you.
So, it would be interesting to get the overall plan for this.
I mean, at that point, you could still recommend, look at that, look at something.
Absolutely, I mean, the helpfulness is, is the public hearing.
The public community are just the other side of that, just way across that, cross over into the left of the red line, where you're still behind a bulkhead, and there's a, there's actually a rock revetment around the corner, so you can still be outside of the wetland zone at that point.
Yes, right, you could be, and the wetland setback is a hundred and fifty feet for construction, so, you know, you could be within the two hundred feet jurisdiction, you know?
Even when we were doing this, we were taking feedback from the commercial fisher, fishermen, um, they also helped to say where they don't go. So, they picked the middle of the thing, so even into the northwest, that's widely used for loading and unloading, um, for the commercial dock. So, they really moved us as well to where the people that are there every day, where they would watch, you know?
I remember, they're a mess, you have no idea what that was like.
Oh, shoot.
It still looks like ass.
That's some box, fish boxes and stuff.
Yeah, checking your tires once you leave, just in case you're caught in the hell, you know?
Okay, I think we should keep in mind, you know, an alternative location.
Yeah, I think you've, you've given them feedback, and, uh, we'll, we'll get the public feedback, because I know the public is interested in this one, yeah, so.
And, and, um, you know, the caveat of flood zone, of this being underwater, uh, and how that's going to affect, uh, certain functioning mechanisms, so that the mechanical boxes, if they're going to be fourteen, fifteen feet off the ground, is that enough? And if you're going to have emergency EMS antennas up there, it, it just, I mean, there's a kind, kind of a contradictory logic in my mind to this. So. So, it's complete, and we're scheduling a public hearing, motion? By Gloria, second by David.
Me, also.
Me, yes.
Right, okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, uh, five, six in favor, one absent, thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone, thank you, Claire.
Okay.
Okay, we're at prenup.
This is a cyclone, special exception for seventy and eighty, Scuttle Hole Road, it's the two lots just south of the railroad, um, on Scuttle Hole there. This was the, um, the two mixed-use buildings, one, uh, number seventy, which is a triangular lot to be office space and affordable housing unit on the second floor. And then the triangular lot is the school or the educational services, uh, use with the two affordable housing units, um, upstairs. So, we're reviewing it, um, just came in last month, uh, we had it on for pre-submission in December with the report adopted in January. Uh, I reviewed it and it does not yet meet the submission requirements, namely, the, uh, the relief or interpretation they might have to get from zoning for the second, uh, unit on the, on the, uh, over the school use, because it doesn't have the minimum square foot requirement. So, they'll need that first before we could even entertain or review SECR, so it's incomplete, um, for now, until we get that information.
So, yeah, they have to go to the Z B A?
Z B A, I understand they're talking to, uh, Sean McDermott, uh, to see if there is an interpretation there, but they might have to go to the Z B A for, uh, for that. For second use of, for the second unit, yeah, for the second dwelling unit, because they don't meet the minimum requirements for the square footage for, for, to have two, it's eleven thousand square feet per dwelling unit, plus they have the use of the educational service downstairs.
Right.
And the lot's only twenty thousand square feet. And the lot's only twenty thousand square feet.
Okay, yeah, alright. So a motion to deem this incomplete by George, second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Six in favor, one absent. And Anthony, you're back with Bud Hampton.
Sitting around for a while, huh? So, we previously deemed this application incomplete and back and forth a little bit. The big thing was, since this was the first application to come in, everyone remembers the site, the old car val.
Still a car val, is it?
It's still a car val, actually. It's not old yet, and uh, you know, the big, the big thing we were looking at, obviously, uh, we had a traffic report done.
This is yours now, Carl?
This is Carl's. Not, you know, and we're getting more and more of these. I referred them to the board for review. Um, and then in this case, uh, it went back to the DOT, um, 'cause we wanted to make sure that they were okay with the numbers. And they came back and said that they're not asking for any further studies. The numbers don't generate the kind of traffic. Um, but a big thing about this project, it's a good thing.
We're getting access to the, to the route to the east.
You know, the big thing with this um, is that you can see here, we've limited, right now it's showing one way in, right, on Montauk Highway, and then a lovely cross access uh, to the light.
The signal is over there.
Signal is over there.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's the key here. I mean, and, and the other side of it is, and I know Walter Dunn is here and with the applicant, um, they've been working with the DOT. My guess is there's, um, and they've showed plans, uh, DOT is going to make them do other stuff out here. Um, it could be a de-acceleration lane.
De-acceleration.
You know, something like that. And I've seen DOT plans that are, you know, and they're still working it out, um.
No, no left turns out of that site.
No left turns, no, 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 no. Um, the other thing was, and I'm pretty sure. Is that ours, your site?
Yes.
Okay. So I think he can come up here. Um, he just showed a little plan. This is the site here, these numbers, and he's gonna give it out to the board. Um, I think, um, explain, these are DOT-related um, improvements. Walter Dunn, Dunn Engineering?
Yes, Walter.
Good to see you, Walter.
Good to see you.
The last time we met, I guess it was back in October, and we thought we'd have approval from the state within a week. I retract my words. We're on the process and I thought. As part of a discussion with him, we submitted a highway work permit. And I'd just like to hand out copies of it now.
Sure.
This was uh, sent electronically to the state. What happened here is, at that last meeting in November, in October, there was a comment from the board that said, we want to consider changing the access point above a site. It normally was in, but right out. And I thought that was a good comment, if you recall. So, this plan that we have here now shows an aerial, and it shows the existing pavement markings underneath it. It shows everything the state needed to know to be able to determine what improvements we were ready to put in at no cost to the state. And we have all the ones noted at the bottom typed in, so they could look at each one of the locations, and we showed them with arrows up on the map, correct? And as a result of that, this one shows rights in and rights out. It's gonna be up to the state to come back and say, yes, they like that, I like the other. So it's either just right turns in only, or right turns in, and right turns out.
Right turns out going to the signal.
Uh, yes.
Headed, yeah, headed east.
Yeah, okay.
In other words, heading east.
And, and, and the plan, you know, doesn't show that. It still shows just coming in, at least the one that I.
It shows on, for the application to the state, and electronically we showed this figure. We showed the figure that showed the internal roadway heading east to connect to this traffic signal, right?
That's the one, the proposal that we are in favor of.
And, and in all aspects, if we didn't do anything with that traffic access management plan to connect over to the signal, we would have probably been in and operating already. But since we're doing work, we have to recommend modifications to the traffic signal. So that and some of the pavement markings was taking time right now. So, so we are where we are now. And this is just for your records to say, hey, in case you've never seen what goes into a highway work permit, this is one of the figures that we put in so you could see, and defines all the roadway improvements that we think the state is going to approve for.
How do you need to change the signal in some way?
Well, well, first of all, there is no southerly leg of the signal, so you have to put in a driveway coming and approaching Route twenty-seven. And at that point, we have to put in a, uh, one lane and coming in, and two lanes coming out. One is separate left turn lane going to the west.
Right.
And a separate right turn through lane going to the east to go out and connecting over.
Just like it is across the road in the commons, exactly, a mirror of that.
And uh, of course, there's a, the bus shelter is right in the way of our driveway proposed for that southerly leg. That has to be moved. And now the state's gonna be looking at it and determining, determining what, uh, where detectors have to go in the roadway. If they're gonna use a new vision, detectors of myo-vision, or if they use a standard loop detector.
Okay. I think that's a town bus shelter.
Pardon me?
The town bus shelter.
Well, it, it notes on here relocate the existing bus shelter.
Yeah, the town put them in, yeah.
Walter, one, just related to what you were just saying. You know, one of our recommendations from our town task force is that we encourage the county and the state to go more of the, uh, rather than the in-ground sensor, some of the newer technology that I, you certainly know better than I, but you know, what I will call car counter-technology, where, you know, where it's picking up the number of cars in the queue rather than just being activated by a sensor. I assume, when you say they're looking at a couple of options, I would say, I, I'd like to encourage you and I, the town, I think is gonna have conversations with the DOT about trying to go to some of that more advanced technology. So, um, in this case, I'd say this would be a great place for them to start, if it can be done.
And we agree with you, you know?
Okay.
Uh, it, it's new, so we think it's gonna have to be a meeting. There's some locations that they've used a myo-vision. We used them, obviously, when we did the counts out there. We didn't have to put people out there in the location to make the turning counts. We had it all by video. So it would record as like, a lot of data that, you know, how many pedestrians were walking by, how many people were riding their bikes, and so forth. Would you, generally, don't get all that data available. So with the new technologies, we're doing it. And, and we may have to put in signal poles there. So this could be over a hundred thousand dollars to do the effects.
Someone get Greg off the floor.
Like the groans from the client.
But this would be a great place to, to combine what I think the town, 'cause it is in the town task force recommendations to start those conversations. This would be a great place to start doing that. And, and the other point with regard to the uh, bus shelter, and if it's appropriate, the town is responsible for the maintenance of those shelters, and I handled that when I was here. The cedar shingles are beginning to fall off. Many of the shelter roofs, we installed them all with cedar shingles, which was lovely at the time. But they're all starting to, to fall apart, uh, and in a couple cases have been replaced by metal uh, roof. If that's something, and you may find, you know, putting those together and taking those apart, or they're kind of like erector sets. Now, I don't know if they have to come apart for your move, um, but uh, maybe looking if you could possibly replace the roof of the shelter as part of this, um, again, I think that would be like a great, great thing to add to it.
I believe Suffolk Transit, Suffolk County Transit has to be involved, and the deputy commissioner.
Darnell, right.
Tyson, he's worked for Dunn Engineering.
Right, right, that's right. Um, but the town, the town is responsible for the maintenance, the way the agreements worked. But again, it's a county bus route on the state highway, um, but my understanding is the town and, you know, unless it's changed.
Walter Bundy, does that?
Right.
He'll bring up all those points. Very good.
Yeah, yeah. That would be great to, you know, if.
Are the earth shelters lit up? Do they have lighting in them? Do the shelters have lighting?
I don't think so.
No, shelters are not lit.
Not at night? Nothing?
No, no lighting in the shelters.
There are a number of those bus shelters, yeah.
Yeah, no, we, and I think probably twelve or fifteen shelters got put up.
Yeah. You missed Bridgehampton.
Main Street. We'll talk about that one.
And then just to, you know, they had been before the architectural review board. You know, if you remember, there's a, an angled roof on these uh, buildings, their floor, you know, it's a ceiling glass. Um, you know, so they're proposing to change it to a, they're using the same building. Um, they're reducing the windows, um, and uh, looking to change the siding to, uh, what you see here, natural wood.
I thought they were making it much more traditional looking. Did I not see other pictures of it?
No, I mean, they're, they're showing sort of behind the hedge here, whether we're gonna ask for a hedge with some trees, I don't.
Both.
You go both. Um, but that's what they're showing right now, obviously, we'll.
Keeping a flat roof, as opposed to peek-through, as the ARB said.
ARB approved uh, this. But that doesn't, that doesn't give the planning board the inability to require, you know, some changes to make the building look better. So we will, um, so finally, we'll all.
Where do we go with this?
So I'm gonna recommend that we deem the application complete and schedule the public hearing for May twenty-second.
May twenty-second.
Yeah.
Okay, it will be, it will be a busy.
I feel like, no, I think May eighth is still, May twenty-second is open.
Yeah, May eighth, we have three.
I think there's so many more applications since this one.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Are we thinking that by then DOT is going to, or whatever information they need from the transformation will be in ham?
You want all these changes that they're making?
Now that we deem this, we're actually gonna purpose, and I'm sure the DOT is gonna come back.
Okay.
And they're gonna say, here's everything being discussed, and so, um, and, and anything that they are gonna require will be incorporated into us. So, this is the deemed complete.
So those de-acceleration lanes are really good. You know, the parish, there's one in front of the parish going west, yeah, it's terrific.
As a commuter, I don't have to tell you how much I like seeing them when I'm on these roads.
Yeah, yeah, makes a big difference.
But de-acceleration lanes.
Okay, so we're gonna take a vote for deeming it complete and setting a public hearing for May twenty-second. Motion by Dennis, second by George. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Six in favor, one absent. Thank you. Pietra Dura.
See you, Walter. So.
There you go.
Pietra Dura.
Pietra Dura. Pietra Dura.
Oh, you got it. Thank you. Thought you were doing yours. Um, so this is, everyone knows Centro Restaurant, right? Centro on Montauk Highway. So, actually, if you look at the aerial here, um, I've been to the restaurant, uh, they have some bocce ball courts back there.
Of course.
And um.
Wait, really? While they're waiting for a table, you could play a game.
And so.
Was that always there?
No, um, and incidentally, the parking here is great. There's a lot of parking. It doesn't overflow into the street, um, it's never full. So they have these bocce ball courts. They, then I think a violation of something got issued in the building department, they came to me. And I sat down with the chief to figure out any which way that we could deal with this as easy as possible. Um, but he couldn't make a, a, a bocce ball court accessory to the restaurant. So the way we did this was, um, they were treated as sort of a recreation use, a second use in the property, which can be accommodated here. What I'm recommending is, 'cause they use it, they have some people come, um, maybe have a little tournament, um, doesn't really generate a lot. So what, what I'm just gonna recommend in this case, is let me deem the application, recommend deeming it complete, waiving a hearing with a thirty day. I'll refer to the fire marshal, so we at least had the fire marshal know. Uh, and I will ask the applicant just to provide the information that says, you know, how are these used? Are there tournaments? Are there times? So we can have it on record, and we can include it in any approval, so that way no, you know, um, it was the easiest way I could deal with this outside of what I tried to do, which I, I couldn't call it accessory to anything. So, I'm just gonna recommend that we deem this complete with a thirty day written, and I'll do a referral to the fire marshal.
I'm just wondering if we should have a public hearing.
Uh, you know, I, I was thinking that one wasn't necessary, but that's, that's just my opinion.
What is around it there, Anthony? What, like, are there neighbors or anybody that might?
There's residential to the left.
There's residential to the west.
Residential to the west.
And then there's mostly commercial on the right side, on the east side.
It's hard to have public hearings. I don't think there's gonna be issues.
The courts have been there for a while?
They've been there for a while.
For a while, right?
Yeah.
I see. I think it's been like five or six years. Do you want me to see?
There is residential to the west, though.
Yeah, there is residential to the west.
They might have a public hearing.
So whoever's in that house might have something.
Twenty twenty.
And, I mean, providing information on how often is it lit.
Twenty eighteen was one, and then they expanded.
Yeah. You wanna, wanna have a hearing?
Let's have a hearing.
Why not?
Let's have a hearing, yeah.
Because I only have the cannabis one on. We could do this one first.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
But let's not book anything else.
Okay, that's fine. So we'll deem this complete and we'll schedule a hearing for May.
Complete and a public hearing for May twenty-second. Motion by Gloria, second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Six in favor, one absent.
Jackie, you might recall, I just uh, we added number twenty to the agenda.
Oh, yes, the.
I'll explain this to the board, it'll take two seconds.
Yes.
So what?
The Clay Pit, Clay Pit Road, yeah.
Clay Pit Road, exactly. Um, Clay Pit Road, uh, town dedicated road, you know, and back and forth, road dedication, performance bonds, maintenance bond. Um, there is no address. It was just, it's just for the um, release of the maintenance bond and dedication of the uh,
Oh.
of the road.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Where, where is it?
The Clay Pit.
Off of Vote, Turnpike.
Okay, yeah. I can figure it out.
So they basically finally finished up the last segment of it. She's gonna.
Of the road?
Oh, that's right.
Kind of opposite the transfer station.
Yep.
Down south, a little bit.
Oh, there's like a little bit of it?
It's, it, the terminus, that's it. That's, that's the only part that was outstanding.
Okay.
So, I got the sign off from, this took a while. I got the sign off from Tom. I got all the legal documents to be signed uh, by the appropriate parties. So let me just read the resolution into the record on the same one that you did the first time around. Um, it's resolved that the planning board hereby finds that the obligations of the performance bond agreement have been satisfactorily completed, and hereby recommends that the town board release the principal from the obligations of the agreement and return the past book security, and that the maintenance bond period be waived considering the length of time that the improvements have been constructed and satisfactorily maintained, and that the road and drainage improvements be taken into the town highway system.
Amen. Simple. Okay.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Six in favor. One absent. Is that your last?
Well, I'll be back.
Okay. Claire, NRP holding?
NRP, so uh, it's been ninety days since the decision, and they're asking for an extension.
To July twenty-third.
Yeah. Yes, ninety-day extension till July twenty-third.
Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Six in favor, one absent.
Lot number one, that's the main lot, and then the lot number two is the strebbles lot in the same July twenty-third.
So to July twenty-third. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Six in favor, one absent.
Claire, is that because they're waiting for input from someplace? Do you know?
The, yes, um, I'm not quite sure why.
Okay.
Um, but this is very typical of any site plan we've ever submitted. We get extensions before there's some of the plans, so. They won't be able to submit their plans for site plan also until they have the subdivision approval from the health department. They might be pending that.
Seth, number fourteen, bay water, sea water, well water? Water cubed.
What a name.
Water cubed.
So that's four, three, uh, eight, three, Newac. One moment, please. Uh, you may recall, I brought this to you for, it was incomplete last time. I needed to get a three-panel survey from them, which I have received. I am merely deeming this complete uh, today and would like to schedule a public hearing on the matter. Uh, the lot line modification is to combine these two lots together, and in doing so, abandon this flag strip here and give it, or merge it into this lot. So it's a two-part lot line modification. Uh, this is a subdivision from nineteen seventy-six, Mini Schwartz. There is an easement back here, uh, that fifty feet has been, uh, is a buffer uh, for the upper cove here, uh, which was written into the covenants. Uh, importantly, one of the covenants does say, uh, that there would be no subdivision or modification. So I had spoken to uh, council and it did not seem that it really, I guess it's up to you as well, if it warrants a covenant amendment um, or not.
But they're not subdivided further?
Well, we're not subdividing. We're actually merging in this case.
That you're using them or reducing them or lots there?
Reducing. We're reducing the number of curb cuts. We're reducing the density. Uh, in actual, when I looked at the three-pane, uh, survey, there's some, uh, there are a generator and a pool equipment in the flag strip. So we're actually making those structures part of the actual property that they serve. So there's, these are wins all around.
Do we, it's a covenant modification, though?
I don't think it is because if you were going to modify the covenant, there's not, you're not changing the wording. It's not, you wouldn't be, it would still say the same thing when you're done. So, and the purpose of it and the intent was obviously not to make more or less, but since.
So it's consistent with the covenant?
Yeah, it doesn't really.
So we don't have to amend the covenant at all?
I don't think it's necessary.
Uh, where the, those trees are between the properties where they're moving that line, are there any drainage structures in there?
Uh, this doesn't serve as a, uh, a current driveway, uh, but there are, there's a generator here and a pool equipment nestled here.
Structures.
Yeah, that was the right away.
No drainage.
That was the flag, that was meant to be the flag of the driveway.
It was meant to be the flag.
This one here, it, it will serve as the access to the new combined lot.
That's not proved yet.
This one here, no. There is not, neither a curb cut. There is one solitary curb cut, whereas there could be three. So it would be reduced down to.
And and there's two potential lots up against the water and this makes, turns it into one potential lot?
Yeah, precisely. Fifty-five thousand square feet.
Single host twice as big.
And they will.
I don't know the intent. Uh, the attorney is Dr., Dr., it's Dennis Downs and he'll attend and answer any further questions, I guess, next time around.
That's fine.
So, uh, I was proposing May twenty second for the.
We're trying to keep that pretty slim.
Uh, we need to slim that one down then?
Pretty, well, it's pretty, it's pretty, well, you never know.
You never know.
I know.
Yeah. I think we can squeeze it on for the eighth.
Let's do it on the eighth.
This should be simple.
I think this should be simple and the eighth doesn't seem to be.
We have three.
There would be four. This would be five for the eighth.
Might as well do it if we're going to be here.
We can handle it.
Okay, so deeming it complete, scheduling a public hearing for May eighth. Motion? Motion by Gloria, second by Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor and one absent. And Shepard, Marty and Judith Shepard, that's all, they withdrew the application.
A new round?
We're waiting for wetlands.
What's off?
It's not.
Shepard, Judith, that was an old one.
Old. But they withdrew the application. Kristen, they withdrew the application, but my reading.
Not withdrawn. They're going, they're trying to get their wetlands flagged.
Okay.
That was my mistake of putting it back on.
Oh, okay. So there's no, it's not even on the agenda. I have the old agenda, okay. Seth? Sixteen, lot number five, a site disturbance application?
That too is off. Uh, I did not receive a revised vegetation plan. The site disturbance.
We're acknowledging site plans on seventeen Turtle Cove.
Yes.
Acknowledging that and.
One fifty-seven Montauk Highway and A and E Club.
Uh, so that's seventeen, eighteen and nineteen acknowledged.
Oh.
We've done the add-on. Okay. We are done. So motion to adjourn?
Motion.
By Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Six in favor, one absent.
How heavy is it today for public hearing?
Two, and I think it'll be very short.
Well, there's going to be, the neighbors are going to fight on.
Yes.
I'm, I'm here.
I gotta wait two hours before we do this public hearing.
You'll make it up on the twenty second, but I won't be here. Well, I was planning to be here.
He does, he does want to be here.
I'm kidding.